So like changes a little bit. So yeah.
Yes.
Oh, we all feel that. So is Restaurant Week busy? That's what I want to know.
Eh, Restaurant regularly has. It doesn't do much.
Yeah. Yeah, and so they got a little plaque here. Imagine, well, I can see it, I mean, there's not the.
Tonight it was a little bit, but first couple of days.
Open till eight or past eight now. Are you open past eight?
Till night, yeah.
I see, you know what?
Yeah, so, yeah, I, I looked at, there's lots of, lots of options for Restaurant Week.
Mm-hmm. You want the numbers to keep dwindling though, who was involved in that?
Does it?
We started out where there were like twenty something first, and then it's down to, I don't know, like nine or ten right now, so.
I think so, yeah, yeah. I, I, I think like more this year than last year, but I don't know that. But I, I maybe didn't look last year. Restaurant Week is fun, I thought. I'm in the big cities.
Yeah.
Should be fun here. People should go.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's been, Week has been slow.
Well, it's not slow though, isn't it? This is the slow time.
It is, yeah.
So at the grocery stores and somewhere, yeah.
Yes, it is. Weekends are good.
Yeah, people are leaving for spring break this time and they're not, you know, people aren't coming, they're leaving.
Oh.
Yeah, that's true.
It's past seven. Not doing my job here, sorry, Jase. Let's call the meeting to order for Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, March eighth, twenty twenty-three at seven o'clock. Uh, roll call.
Steve Lake Enchantment.
Dennis Ferraro, Eagles Nest Road.
Bethany Cody, Lake Enchantment.
Jim Johnson, White Oak Drive.
Linda from Slough Norwood Street.
Jason McCarthy, Planning and Zoning Minister.
Eric's gone.
Eric is attending, uh, he's the assistant coach for the Marquette Redman varsity basketball team and they are playing Traverse City tonight.
Oh, alright. Good luck to them. Approval of the agenda.
Who to approve the agenda?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes from the previous meeting, February eighth, twenty twenty-three.
Who to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, opposed? Public comment. Anyone wishing to make comments may, right now may do so, or you can wait till your agenda item comes up, which would be fine too, so. Alright, seeing no one then, we'll head into new business. Six A is the zoning map amendment request for one seventy County Road four ninety-two. Market Township owned five acre parcel. Tax ID number is five two zero eight zero two zero zero two four zero zero. Jason.
Thanks. Good evening. We're, uh, staff, as you know, have been working with Renovar Development along with, uh, other partners, including the land bank and, uh, the Brownfield Authority, to try to bring together partners to have this housing development work for us, uh, and find a balance that we're all looking for. Um, so when you're looking at the property, it's zone, um, general business, excuse me, and this is the subject property here adjacent to Swamwada Park and right behind or just south of the Goodwill Michaels, um, Dollar Tree Development. And that property is currently zoned general business. If you were to look through the land use nomograph, the residential land uses that they're proposing, including multifamily, um, single family and duplexes, those land uses are not available to be developed in, uh, the general business zoning district. Um, it was staff's and thought or request of the Planning Commission to make a map amendment to that property to help facilitate, uh, the proposed development. And as such, there is development district on two sides of the property, and it would not be considered a spot zone, but just an amendment to allow for these land uses, uh, to be considered, uh, pending the upcoming planning unit development that we're expecting sometime in the near future.
So, just so I have this straight, where you're, you're anticipating that that parcel will need a PUD based on the density of, uh, residential stuff going in there, is that correct?
Steve, I think it would have to be.
Yeah, I, I would concur with that.
With regard to the, the density that's proposed, but I think that we can all agree that we're looking to maximize that property.
Yeah, I can see that.
And its value, so, um, you know, based on their initial concept submittal, um, this would be staff's recommendation. This is one of the ways that the township can assist the developer. We don't have a lot of statutory, um, tools in the toolbox to aid in, in, uh, developments, but this is one, uh, that we can, you know, go ahead and try to get the zoning straight on the property. And then the other is to assist with, um, what we'll be requesting of the Township Board, probably forthcoming here, will be a request for a phase one. Um, that'll be paid for by the Brownfield Development, so you can understand there's a lot of pieces to the puzzle here, but, um.
What's a phase one, Jeff?
Uh, it's an environmental assessment of the property.
Oh, okay.
Mm-hmm.
So can I, would, would you need to do any rezoning on that at all if it's going to be a PUD? Does it matter what the zoning is?
Um, I think it does.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm certainly not looking to create more work for myself, but, um, I think this is the way to, to, to make it the cleanest.
And, and what do you like, what, what would you like to recommend it to be?
Development district.
Okay.
Cause that way, if, if something doesn't work out, you know, there's really no other residential land uses around the property, so if it was rezoned and there were commercial, uh, interest in the property, it wouldn't need the public hearing because there wouldn't be residential zoning or residential land use to buy that property.
So are we voting to schedule the public hearing or voting to pass this first?
No, to schedule the public hearing.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing for the, uh, to extend the map to have included the development district zoning for this particular parcel.
That would be for April twelfth at seven P M. I'll second that.
Any discussion? I guess just the one thing that, you know, when, when reading through this, I was kind of confused about, it, it didn't say to schedule a public hearing. So do you think maybe we could put that in there, just so if people look at the agenda, they don't see that we just passed that? Cause it doesn't say scheduled, anything about scheduled public hearing like it has in the past.
Yeah, it's on page three. It says it's on page three under review recommended.
No, I, I know, but I mean under six A, under the agenda. It doesn't say, like usually it'll say schedule a public hearing for the zoning map amendment request.
Oh, I can make note of that in the meeting minutes, but the agendas are already public.
Okay.
But, yeah, that's a good point, I guess, for next time.
Okay.
Just put it in parentheses or something.
Okay. Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Thank you.
Six B, twenty twenty-three Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund Development Grant Application Proposal.
Okay, so, um, we've had this in our, uh, I guess recreation plan and in our idea box for a while. And after a recent conversation with some representatives from NTN, uh, we thought that, you know, we weren't successful with our acquisition grant. There's more money towards development with regard to the Natural Resource Trust Fund. And so, um, we brought this to the Recreation Committee at their last meeting. They recommended that we move forward with this. So in order to apply for the grant, uh, we need a public hearing. But essentially what the grant would entail would be a trailhead development, not to the extent that you'd see along County Road five fifty. Um, that's a major, large trailhead, but a, another trailhead off of Grove Street, which is directly across from, um, this is a better view of it, but, the Well Road, it's off of Grove Street. It would be along the Well Road, south of those trees in that open area there, um, and just south of Vandenberg. You can see the trail layer is on this particular, it's the green line, so it's effectively, people come out of, uh, what will be the Heritage Silos PUD, and then they'll run along the road, cross the road, and then there's a trail that kind of weaves through our property. And it extends down, the trail system's quite extensive, uh, south of this area. NTN is proposing to, uh, cover, uh, a large portion of the match for this, so really, really shouldn't be much of an impact to the taxpayers at this point. I will be asking the Township Board probably to, to contribute, um, some money towards this, but it won't be, I would think, any more than ten to fifteen thousand dollars. Um, I know that we have some budgeted, and I know that the Township Board is looking to utilize the excise tax from the marijuana dispensaries for recreation, so, uh, only a portion of that would be sought by us. Um, this is kind of, you know, April first is the deadline for the grant application, so it'll be pretty bang-bang. Um, I already actually put the notice in the newspaper, um, figuring that the Planning Commission would support the application process. Um, so there would be a public hearing, um, that's what we're recommending on the twenty-second of this month. And, um, we would invite, you know, people in, we, we may not get very many people, but we'll have NTN here, um, and they can answer the detailed questions. But the amenities that we're looking to place at the property would be, um, a gravel parking area, a pavilion, a two-sided vault toilet, so male and female, with a small storage area in the middle for supplies. A skills or playground, a kind of a pump track, same thing that's over at, uh, very popular for the kids. In fact, in talking to Lori Halsworth from NTN, she said, most people that go to the trailhead park their vehicles, the parents have coffee at the pavilion and watch the kids go around the pump track. An educational kiosk on trail etiquette and just a general layout of the trails in the area, a bike repair station, a bike rack, and, uh, to get us extra points on our application, we would have recycled plastic trash and recycling receptacles. So this is in our recreation plan, um, under our action program in the year twenty twenty-two. However, any, uh, of the projects that are identified within the five-year scope of our recreation plan can be applied for at any time during that five-year period. So it kind of just rose to the top as kind of a low-hanging fruit and something that we could still apply for a grant this year and, and further along our recreation plan. So, um, be happy to answer any questions. As far as the cost, we had something in the fifty to seventy-five thousand dollar range, it may be more than that. Probably a hundred, um, would be conservative. Uh, I know that the vault toilet itself is about fifty thousand dollars, so there you go on that.
They are permitted though, eh?
Yes, sir. Mm-hmm. And, um, talked with Lenny, um, from our Public Works Department. The, uh, the gate to the Wellhead Road is just south of this image, uh, immediately south of this image. You can see a car parked, right here, and actually the gate is right there. So that would help keep people off the Well Road as well, to give them a parking area. There is a water line that comes through here that we'll have to mind and pay attention to and plan around, but, uh, Public Works said as long as it's a gravel. Parking lot, as long as there's no structures on the, uh, the line, the water line itself, that could be accessed at any time.
So it'll be right where the parking area is there, where you first come in?
Yep, mm-hmm. We may try to, um, I would personally like to leave a, a kind of a windrow either here and along the road. I think this is where the water line comes through. Um, but we could expand a little bit to the north here. Overall, I kind of measured this out, there's about, you know, an acre and a half there to work with.
Is, is that property owned by the township?
It is.
Mm-hmm.
And it's an acre and a half total property or?
Oh, the property, um, in total is eleven acres.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a very long, narrow, uh.
Is there a way for you to, uh, zoom out on?
Yeah, that's kind of a zoom out there.
That's a zoom out, okay.
Yep.
So even though there's a gate there, the public's still welcome to go back there?
Well, it depends if it's locked or not. Um, a lot of people park along the road and then walk, you know, by the gate with their dogs and walk down there, or ride down there to get to the trail. The goal is to create more awareness about, and create a trailhead so that people just immediately get off the Well Road, get into the parking lot, and then hit the trail, uh, from there, so.
So, so is there a defined trail all the way through there? Because I've ridden my class-two electric bike in there. And so, I mean, am I riding on NTN trails in there, or there, there's a lot of dirt road back, roads back there? I mean, how, how, how are they even marked?
Yeah, I can get you, uh, NTN trails are fairly well-marked. I can get you a trail map from NTN if you'd like. That way you can know what trails you're not supposed to be on with a class-two E.
Maybe we're putting that, that we can ride, you know, class-two electric bikes on those trails back there. I mean, are they, you're, you're limited to nowhere to ride class-two electric bikes?
I think they only, uh, supported class-one. I think that was a Planning Commission action, actually, and the Township Board action was to support class-one. I think the, uh.
I tried to do two, but nobody wanted to do two.
I wanted to.
The difference is obviously the speed and.
Well, no, the difference is a, a little ham throttle.
And the throttle.
Yeah, and I, I guarantee you, I'm not digging trenches with that throttle when I ride mine. You know, I'm not putting any more impact than a strong guy paddling a bike.
Understood.
Okay.
Yeah.
You know, so.
Would the intent be to keep the, um, parking lot, the trailhead, open during the wintertime for snowbikes?
Yes, yes. Yeah, it would be another, you know, um, stop on the route of the Public Works and building of grounds to stop and. But honestly, in, in talking with Lori, um, they would intend to have heavy involvement in maintaining it and cleaning it and. I don't know about plowing, you know, that'd be something that we could do, but, um, yeah, that'll have to be sorted out. So like I said, this idea has been in our plan, kind of decided that, staff-wise, just decided to try to push it forward and, and do something this year instead of not doing anything. And we think it's a good project. Trailheads are, you know, highly regarded with regard to M and RTF grants. And although it's not on the R and R Heritage Trail, we're hopeful that the NTN trail system will be a regional trail system that we can lean on in the application as far as, uh, providing some additional credence to the application.
Is the actual Well Road part of the NTN trail?
No. No, the trail, as you can see, skirts the east side of the property.
So it doesn't ever hook up with that further down?
Um, it does.
If that crosses and goes over.
It does, but it's way, way down, yeah.
And is that, are they riding the NTN trail on the old state road? Because I know that there's some turnouts where you can take an NTN trail off the old state road.
No.
Huh?
That's not NTN on there.
They're not using it to ride on there?
Well, they might be using it, but it's not an NTN trail.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
No. No, there isn't, there aren't any signs on that.
Okay, good. I don't see any ones right now.
You know, the whole trail thing is only going to keep growing, is my thought. And I think having a parking lot, as Jason's proposing, and a pump track, I think that's, we really want that parking lot. We don't want them parked all along that road.
Well, it's kind of a parking area there now, is it?
Yes, but if it's a little more defined, people will actually use that, yeah, so.
How much, do you have any idea how much the grant would be that you might get for that out of the?
Yeah, we'd be looking at, I, I'm estimating, and we hope to have those numbers refined for you by the, uh, uh, the twenty-second, when the public hearing would be. Um, but I would say around a hundred thousand dollars. With a twenty-five thousand, oh, we'd like to get to thirty percent or more in match, which is when I might ask the board for a little kicker, because if NTN comes up with twenty-five thousand dollars and the board could come up with ten, that puts us up at thirty-five percent match, that's pretty good, and we should score very well. Again, we lose points because we have a high median income in the township, and we are not a part of a, we're not in a metropolitan area. So those are bonus points that are, are lost because of our rural character in competition with other southeast Michigan communities.
When you get these grants, does it hurt your chances to get any of these other grants because you've gotten a grant for this? Like, if you want to do Lions Field or, you know, picking up that other property, does that affect that because of it?
I don't believe so, Jim, because that would be a different grant program. Anything at Lions Field can be funded pretty much through the Passport Grant App Program. Acquisition is a, it is M and RTF, but it's a different pot of money. And this would be a development grant, which we haven't been awarded in quite some time. Actually, since two thousand seventeen, when, uh, we put the tunnel in was the last one that we got.
Was Swamwada Development Grant too?
Uh, portions of it, yep, mm-hmm. There was an acquisition of the additional Dagenau property, uh, that was eight acres. That was in two thousand twelve or thirteen. And then the development of the park was done with, uh, development grant funding, which is previous to the tunnel funding. So as long as you stagger them a little bit, you don't get too greedy with your applications, I, I think that they're, they're pretty consistent. And, and then letting them know that, you know, this is what we're looking at doing, we've had, we've had master plans. Um, we'll get a conceptual rendering of this done, uh, hopefully in the next couple of weeks. Um, I know the Paulson's office has been very generous in that regards.
Is, is there a reason why that's gated where it is?
It's part of the Homeland Security, because we have, uh, wells down south of there.
But couldn't you gate it closer to where the well is?
We could. Um, which brings up an interesting point and something I didn't want to dive into tonight, but, you know, we do own that property. We also own a, a thirty-acre parcel south of there. So there is the potential to develop that into, you know, a ski hill, or, not a ski hill, but a sledding hill, that's been mentioned, um, you know, pickleball, that was, the Rec Committee threw that around too, so there is other property.
Do, do we have a dog park here?
Uh, we don't.
You know, that, there's a, there's a park down in Bloomington, Indiana, and I'm trying to remember what it's called. It's, uh, it was an old railroad area, and they've converted it into a beautiful park area. And they've got two dog parks, one for smaller weight dogs and one for bigger weight dogs. And the park is huge for the dogs. I mean, it's got to be at least two, two, two or three acres, and it's gated and everything. That'd be a great thing for keep, you know, there's a lot of people that would like to just have their dogs run, you know, and you just take them out there and it's, and they, you know, there's a little pavilion in the middle where you sit, you know, and watch your dog, you know, have fun, throw the ball and this and that. I mean, that, that might be something to put in the hopper, your, your brain hopper for the future.
I think Jason did mention that before, yeah.
Yeah, it's in our rec plan. And so, yeah, I mean, like I said, this could be the next little area of recreational development. We wanted to start with a low-hanging fruit, get that off our, get that going, and then, um, see if we can build up, you know, our volunteer base and support and, and then more planning. There's a lot of topography in this area, so it's, you know, sledding hill might be more conducive here, whereas a dog park might be better off, you know, maybe up the hill, if that ever works out.
Is that eleven-acre parcel contiguous to the thirty-acre, acre parcel?
I believe the corners touch, so the southeast corner of this property and the northwest corner of the adjacent thirty acres.
You just got to jump.
Just jump, okay.
But you're right, um, you know, we could make a portion of it not necessarily public, um, but the Well Road could be more utilized for recreational purposes with the gate further down towards the wells themselves.
How do you go about getting that done?
That would just be through the Public Works Department and through the Township Board, um, as, you know, the property's owned by the township as well as the Well Road and the, and the wells themselves.
Might not have all that big cluster of parking right up there before the gate then, and, you know, people could drive down there a little further and park.
Yeah, like, you know, uh, uh, it's a good point. We just haven't thrown a bunch of planning, you know, effort at it yet.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion that we schedule a public hearing for March twenty-second for the six B.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion of support. Any discussion there? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Six C, special use permit, public hearing request for a proposed short-term rental unit to be located at twenty-five seventy-two West Fair Avenue in Marquette, within the zone Urban Residential District. Applicant is Daniel J. Flanagan, twenty-five seventy-two West Fair Avenue in Marquette. Jason.
Uh, Mr. Flanagan is here, it's nice to meet you, sir. I think this is a great example, actually, of, um, one of the things that the Township has done to try to make homeownership a little bit more affordable. Um, if you've read through, um, his narrative, he actually has an updated narrative, I think, that made it into the package, but, um, Mr. Flanagan owns the home here at twenty, uh, twenty-five seventy-two West Fair, surrounded by some vacant lots. And he has submitted an application, paid his fee, um, submitted a, uh, let's see, well, a copy of a survey and a narrative, so all the things that we would need to be comfortable with asking the Planning Commission to schedule a public hearing. And so I guess if there's any question of Mr. Flanagan, you're welcome to ask him, but I think this is a good example of how a homeowner who may choose to spend some time away, um, can make his, uh, you know, owning a home more affordable. And if Eric didn't tell you, I have to tell you now, if you rent your home for more than fourteen days a year, you will lose, is this your primary residence?
It is.
Okay, so you would lose your primary residence exemption, or your, your PRE is called. Oftentimes that, you know, people make more money renting their home than the PRE is, but it's just something to consider.
Are you talking like homestead exemption?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, just so you're aware of that.
Yeah. I'm getting some mixed, uh, signals on that. I, I looked at some stuff and, um, it was, uh, it was confusing because they said that it was, um, or maybe I'm thinking of capital gains.
Yeah, it's pretty cut and dry, I guess, with assessing with regard to the fourteen days. If the Planning Commission scheduled a public hearing, we can go through that between now and then, uh, if you'd like.
Okay.
Uh, I could put you in touch with our assessor or her assistant, and they can, you know, give you the state legislation on that, but.
Okay.
But it's, it's pretty consistent, um, from what I understand, as far as the number of days per year.
Okay.
So just so you're aware.
So that's a total?
That's new to me, so.
A total of fourteen days, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, it's not like you can run it nine days and stop, nine days and stop.
Yeah, fourteen days in a three-hundred-and-sixty-five day calendar.
Something to consider, uh, as long as you're, oh, yeah, you lose your homestead exemption on the property taxes.
Right, so it goes to, or it goes up.
It goes, it goes up.
It doesn't get reassessed at that point, does it?
I'm not sure, Steve. Yeah, I'll ask, though, I can answer.
What, what it does mean though is you'll just have to pay the school taxes after, and, and right now you don't have to. So if you just look at your taxes, see if your school taxes, is that so much it's going to go up?
Oh, okay.
Yep.
It's like having a rental in anyplace else, the rent, the.
Yeah, I've never done it before, so.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Cave in the woods.
Oh.
But I've learned pretty good.
Just stay under fourteen days.
So staff, uh, recommended that, uh, we schedule this public hearing, uh, also on the fourteenth of, I'm sorry, is that right? Twelve, twelve, of April, yep. So we'd have two public hearings that night, and that would save us a little bit of money in advertising and mining turnover as well.
And maybe we could do this one first, right?
Sure, yeah.
Just because I'm thinking the other one might be more people in the audience.
Yep.
I move to, uh, schedule a public hearing for April twelfth for the, uh, proposed short-term rental, uh, agenda of six C.
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion to support. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay.
Well, thank you, Dan. We'll see you again.
Okay.
Um, you can give me a call tomorrow if you like, and I could put you in touch with, or just shoot me an email, and I'll put you in touch with Dulce, just to make sure that, you know, you're fully aware of the implications.
Yes, good, yeah, absolutely. I want to know all this to know what it's, yeah, thank you.
Alright, thank you very much.
Yep.
You're welcome. Before I forget that, just reminded me of something when you said Dulce. Lynn asked me to, to tell all of you that Andrew's mother died, and there's a card out in the, uh, office there, if you want to sign sympathies to it or whatever.
Yep, yeah. And I can go get that after the meeting for you, but.
I already signed mine, but.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, let's move on to unfinished business. Seven A, housing types and uses.
Yeah, so continued discussion on this, um, basically revamped the land use, uh, nomograph that we were looking at last week. I actually still have a couple of que-. that we were looking at last week, I actually still have a couple of questions that I, I don't know, probably would be best for legal, once we move forward, but essentially, I think I got into the packet what we, our discussion was based on the meeting, so you can see here that I have highlighted duplex and town home, a townhouse, kind of the same thing, so the only question I have is, I guess, what are the differences in definition of a duplex townhouse and single family attached, right, they're all kind of the same thing, one's a vertical wall, one's a horizontal wall, so I would like to see, you know, through talking with Roger, if there's a way to just say, single family attached can, can, can basically encompass duplex townhome or single family attached, so we'll see how that works out, but basically, we know that we wanna allow those in rural residential by special land use, single family attached, we're looking at allowing those in rural residential as a special land use, we've added multifamily as a special land use in both urban residential and rural residential, and we are gonna allow single family detached in scenic residential, and this needs to be crossed out. That needs to be crossed out, so I know that, so just pretend that's not.
Yeah, you know, Jason, the, here, I think you forgot something, I know we went through a lot of stuff, these are my notes, so on the duplex, I think we, we, we put a special use permit in scenic residential for duplex townhouse, that, that, those are my notes.
Yeah, I, I mean, we can, we can float that, but I, I think it's gonna be a heavy lift without utilities being in that zoning district.
Okay, well, I, I mean, I was wrong then, but.
Yeah, I thought we quell, squashed that one, but.
Well, the other thing, under a single family attached, I thought we put a Y in our, our rural residential, I don't see why we, we, I, I thought we weren't gonna do.
If, if the property was the right size and allowed for, we have setbacks, okay, okay, so that's why we're doing this, you know, because it is kinda complicated.
Right.
So let me make my notes, then I'm gonna throw Madison a line.
Here, 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 I made a copy of one.
Could you qualify the, the townhouse and the duplex if there was utilities out there, or water and sewer, I mean, then you'd have no issue, right?
Oh, where?
The scenic residential.
There will never be water and sewer, I guess, don't mark my words, but it's un, very unlikely that there'll be water and sewer in that, in those zoning districts.
So is it presumed?
Isn't that what Lanyard's district is all?
No, it is.
They run a P U D.
But they're running a P U D, and they are running their own water and sewer, oh, okay, actually, okay, they're running their own.
Is there a presumption that?
Well, that's not a bad idea, that's not a bad idea, okay, so now, if we did this, let's say we made this change prior to them submitting their P U D, all of a sudden, the land uses that they were proposing now conform to the ordinance because they are proposing townhomes and duplex, well.
Except for lot sizes.
Except for lot sizes, okay.
But that's not, that's not zoning, that's not the, yeah, that still would fit, though.
But, yeah, I, I'm okay with that, let's just float the S, okay?
Yeah.
So we're gonna put an S here, we're gonna put a Y here.
Are you gonna put an S with a star that they have to have access to water and sewer?
Or, no, because they would either have to have water and sewer, or they would have to size their well and septic field based on the structure size.
Okay.
So again, we haven't touched, yeah.
Two wells and two septic?
Potentially.
For the duplex and townhouses, could it also be a triplex, quadplex, if there's three of them together?
So Bethany, the way that our ordinance is written is anything more than two dwelling units is multifamily, so multifamily can, three, four, as many as you want. Current bill.
Eight.
Yeah. We're gonna get rid of this. We're gonna add that, so we've got that, and then accessory dwelling units, we're gonna allow them in our residential districts.
All over.
All over, okay? That's basically it.
That's a huge opening for people. Do you know that? I mean, that's people, they don't wanna go to what we would call nursing homes, they don't wanna go there.
They still have to be zoning, though, don't they, setbacks and all that stuff?
Setbacks will still apply, so property sizes then come into play too, but let's not worry about that.
No, no, I was just, I was just saying, right, they're, they're permitted within, yes, right.
Okay, so I'll take Denny's notes, and that's basically all that I had on that, I think that's a giant step forward.
Are you asking for, is this, are we looking for a motion?
You know what I'd like to do before we schedule a public hearing is get some feedback from legal.
And then the step after that is to schedule a public hearing?
That's correct, yeah.
When, when you put this accessory dwelling unit like that, you know, just thinking ahead to this variance for tomorrow night, how, how's that gonna affect square footage of that accessory dwelling unit, you'll have to keep it smaller than the principal residence then?
No, I don't think we're putting any, I think we discussed that accessory dwelling units would not be counted against a, a garage or a shed, it's gonna be different than that.
Yeah, you're right.
And then the variance tomorrow is not for an accessory dwelling unit, it's for a.
Right, no, I know that, but I'm just, it's not supposed to be bigger than that one is, but, because of that lean to.
It fits on the lot, I mean, it all has to fit.
Yeah, the height and bulk still needs to be scaled to the property and the setbacks that are prescribed for that zoning district.
So the size of that is determined then by the size of the lot, or how does it work?
Yeah, there would be limitations of what you could build based on your lot size, or it might change the type of accessory dwelling unit that you put up, for instance, if you wouldn't do a standalone, perhaps you wouldn't do a standalone if you were on a tight lot, you might either attach it, or put it above a garage, or in the basement, or a garage conversion, so there's different ways to skin the cat there. But I think.
How would the square footage be figured out as to how much you could put on there then, is there a formula that you have, or?
No.
No?
No, I say we just roll with it and see what happens.
Okay.
I think if we were to put some kind of arbitrary square footage on there, then we would be in, at the Z B A for variances, you know.
Is, is there a limit as to the stories, the height of it, then?
Yeah, you still have to maintain the same height requirements that are in the ordinance now.
But it could be like a two-story, if you wanted to attach it onto the house, it could be two stories in it, or?
Yep, and secondary egress, ingress, those would be still required if it's a separate entrance.
Could the public apply for it to be a short-term rental?
That's a good question, and I'm assuming that, yes, they could.
Oh, and they advertise that. That's not just for mom and dad?
It's for mom and, yeah, well.
It's for when mom's not there, nine months out of the year.
Remember, the overarching goal is to make housing more affordable, so if, if they go through the process and they realize that, you know, that is not gonna be, or that they're gonna lose their P R E and their homestead, and, and they're willing to do that, then I don't see really an issue with it, I think you should try to give people tools that we can provide them to make this a better balance.
So let, let's say I, I built a house on my lot, and I don't do anything with it, but then I decide I wanna sell the main house or the property, and then I sell the property, can I still stay in that house that I built?
No, you wouldn't be able to subdivide the property.
No, not subdivide it, but rent it from.
Sure, yeah, and that's, actually, was an example listed in one of our planning magazines, was that a gentleman converted his garage into a dwelling unit, and lived in it and rented out the original home.
Very good touch on that.
Yeah, the city's, city's already been through this exercise, they haven't had any real qualms about it, so they, and in fact, you know, Dennis Dakowitz was at the state planning conference presenting on it.
Well, it'd be hard to do it in the city with those fifty-foot lots.
Which makes it easier for us to do with our larger ones, yeah, so I think it's a, a smart move, I think it's gonna get some good, you know, media attention, and hopefully it'll allow people to be a little bit more creative.
I like it.
Yeah. All right, so, anything to do anymore on that?
No, with your concurrence, I will forward this along to Roger and try to get some, obviously, he's gonna play devil's advocate, and he will have some good responses and, and questions for us, but, yeah, if, if you guys concur, I'll move that along to him, hopefully then, when it comes back to us, either the next meeting or the one after, we'll be able to schedule a public hearing.
Sounds like everyone concurs? Yeah?
Yes.
Great.
Okay, seven B, continued discussion of the solar energy system proposed ordinance amendments.
Yeah, I don't wanna steal Eric's thunder here, I suspect he will be at the next meeting, we can discuss it if you'd like, but essentially, there were some comments that he got back from Brad Newman, and if you look at the summary of edits on page two, revisions, it says, since proposed amendments were presented to the planning commission after two eight, and we didn't have a two twenty-two meeting, we've further consulted with policy and industry experts, continuance of nonconformity is just the big one, indicating that regarding, you know, staff received comment on the proposed S E S amendments from Brad Newman, his comments are below, so basically what, if, if you, and I think what he means by this is that, I see that the exclusion of S E S, you know, solar energy systems, from lot coverage calculations, what about mentioning that an S E S is not considered an expansion of a nonconformity, so for instance, you're required to have so much open space on a property, it's very rare in a residential setting that you would ever get close to maximum buildout on your property, especially out, let's say, Lake Enchanted, where you have a large lot, this is just essentially saying, if you did put up a solar, a solar array, and it had a specific coverage of square footage, that it would not count against your open space requirement, it's very technical.
Well, it's like the, it's like the accessory dwelling unit.
Exactly, yeah.
Right.
Exactly, but it wouldn't, yeah, it wouldn't constitute a nonconformity if it were over that threshold, and that's really just in a way of saying that we're trying to be more green, and then, if you read through the paragraph after that on page three, in italics, it talks about ground cover, so ground cover standards, fencing or screening standards, site plan review standards, repowering and reconfiguration of larger systems, those are topics that I believe he wants to present in more detail to you at your next meeting and discuss further, but essentially, if you did have a ground-mounted system, would you want to see that screened, either by a fence or by natural plantings, landscapes?
Why would you screen out the sun?
Exactly, that was my first thought as, as well, so, you know, we'd have to look at that, it might not be necessary, as it would, or it may prevent, you know, the ultimate, highest performance of the solar array system, but I would just advise that maybe we wait until the next meeting to talk about this, and Eric is still waiting to hear again from Ben Schimpf, because one of Brad's comments was also that he felt that we have a very low threshold at a ten kilowatt system, that appears to be residential only, even though a residential system could be more than ten kilowatts, and they have been installed at more than ten kilowatts, so he thought we might wanna up that threshold as well, so we're hoping to hear more, but he did wanna give you that update, and then I think you'll have more to present to you at your next meeting.
All right, eight A, correspondence, responses to our questions regarding renovary.
Yeah, I didn't respond to Denny's email, which was a response to their response, and I, and I hope to kinda nip this in the bud tonight a little bit, in that, I think we have to be careful about overstepping the planning commission's charge with regard to developers or their developments, certainly when a project is presented to you, and the developer's in the room, and they're being reviewed by what they've submitted, I would feel a lot more comfortable with that conversation, rather than having an ongoing email battle about something that hasn't been applied for yet, Denny had a lot of assumptions in his email numbers, figures, one thing that's not, I don't, I don't think discussed yet, is the fact that there's gonna be a brownfield application for this process, so the township's gonna have a little skin in the game in that we're gonna say, or we can't say, we're gonna use the brownfield to install utilities, we're gonna use the brownfield to conduct a phase one environmental assessment, so those costs get figured into that large picture of what is affordability, and, so I guess my point is that I'm hopeful that we can continue to work with them, they, they've submitted an offer, or I guess it was an offer to purchase, that's gonna go, or an option, I'm sorry, an option, and they require a resolution, because this is gonna be funded by, there's gonna be some gap funding from the state, there's gonna be some gap funding from the brownfield, and potentially from the land bank, because renovary could acquire the property, turn it over to the land bank, and then there's other grants or things that can come into play to help facilitate this development, I don't fully understand the metrics of all this yet.
And that's the only one.
Yeah, and I think we're gonna get a grand explanation of all this, but I don't think we're there yet, and before we get, you know, all bent out of shape about what is affordable, what's not, let's just focus on the land uses and the potential highest and best use of the property, I think we're going in the right direction, you know, if you read the comments that were, you know, on social media, I think that was, those are all positive as well, and you don't hear that a lot, you, you know, you get a lot of pushback and things that.
What, what was on social media?
Oh, TV six picked up the initial, you know, present, presentation of the concept to the township board, and.
Oh, yeah, there was a newspaper.
Yeah, and word on the street speaks very highly of the township oftentimes with regard to our planning efforts, so I, I think we're gonna get an application pretty soon, so what's gonna happen next is that I drafted a resolution today, sent it to Roger and the township board, the resolution basically is to agree with the, the, the purchase option that renovary submitted, and from there, then they could start to work with locking up all of these different figures and estimates and things like that, so the P U D hopefully will be coming to us, I would assume, sometime in April and May, and at that time, I think we can really, once they present it, you know, give them that opportunity to present it, but if you're still not satisfied at that point, then we can start the exaction process of, you know, negotiating with them, and, and then what it will come down to, I believe, in the end, is how long that brownfield is for, so if we say, well, we wanna have, you know, more affordable housing, and the cost of the housing should be this, then that brownfield may be extended further, and the township board will have to agree to that, you know, typically, the two brownfields that we've had, we've had one at Senex, which was to clean up some, you know, sandy soils, and the other one was at the Bearland Beam, where they had some asbestos in their roofing.
Where does the brownfield funds come from?
That's a great question.
They all come from us.
It's, it's, it's a state pot of money, I believe, but I'm, I'm not exactly sure.
And how would that, how would that, how would that money figure in, so in other words, you're, based on what you just said, so the brownfield money would come in, it would allow an offset to some of the installation of sewer and water and road access and so forth?
So there's qualifiable scope items that a brownfield can fund, and right now, we have a. And right now we have a base value of that property at about five hundred thousand dollars. So obviously they're gonna elevate the value of that property. And the township is going to incrementally recapture that, uh, value as the years go on. And those scope items are paid back to the brownfield. So the water and sewer, they're gonna be paid for upfront by the brownfield. As well as.
Paid to the township.
Or the developer in this case, yep. And then over time, the township gets reimbursed for those costs. Or I shouldn't say that, the brownfield gets reimbursed for those costs. And then at some point, you know, the brownfield's done. And then the township has all of those, ha- has the tax benefit in a hundred percent.
So, uh, um. It sounds like what you're talking about here is. That all of this put together and mixed together would encourage Renovari. To lower their price point for certain units. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I don't, I can't remember if their initial concept said that they will have a percentage of attainable affordable housing. As a, as opposed to the whole thing being that way. For instance, that's what the, um, I believe, you know, the. The old orphanage, when that was redeveloped, there were a portion of. Those apartments that were set aside for, and that was for low income. Okay, so we're not talking low income in here. Uh, we're talking attainable housing, so. Again, there's lots of unanswered questions.
So. I recall from our discussion of Forestville that there was some consensus. Uh, it wasn't me, but because I was ignorant and just trying to say, you know, you gotta lower the price, whatever. But that you shouldn't try to, it's not our place as a planning commission or the township for that matter. To force any particular developer to sell something for a particular price.
Right? That's accurate.
Okay, so that's not what I'm suggesting here. I'm suggesting that, hey. They said, Renovari said twice, either in this Joe Ferrari's response and also in their initial proposal. Our, our, our units are gonna be market driven. Okay, good. Well, if you have a four hundred and fifty square foot studio and a seven hundred and fifty square foot one bedroom. That are joined as, uh, uh, townhouses or a, you call it a duplex or whatever the hell you want. Or two, two seven hundred and fifty units joined as a duplex. Let the market drive the price for what somebody's gonna pay for a seven hundred and fifty unit. We're not doing anything. As I understand it, as a planning commission, we have the right to decide how big. A unit is gonna be in a particular instance.
I don't believe so.
Well, I mean, we have, we have, uh, we have certain, uh, ordinances that say you can't build a house. Bigger than such and such on a particular piece of property because it'll violate setbacks. So we do regulate size. In that sense. Right?
Yeah.
Okay, so all I'm saying is, so upfront, unless this, all this talk about affordable housing. Is simply a platitude as a cover to let developers come in and do anything they damn well please. Uh, you know, I don't know who can afford, who, I mean, I, I don't see anybody making under a hundred thousand dollars that can afford. A fifteen hundred square foot home or even an eleven hundred square foot, the way it's going. Okay? So are we, is this just an exercise in what? We're just BS? This thing about affordable housing or do we, we wanna achieve it? Because if we're willing to achieve it, we'll just say to Renovari, hey. You know, you're gonna put forty-eight units in there, make sixteen of them. A, a combination of, uh, a, a studio and a, and a, and a one bedroom. That's all. Let the market drive. If you can get, if you can get four hundred thousand dollars for a, for a, a four hundred and fifty square foot studio. Hey, you know, fine. We're not trying to regulate their price point. I mean, we are, but indirectly, but let the market, you know, determine that. All we're doing is saying, we have, in our master plan. We have a certain goals and objectives of affordable housing. In the PUD qualifying condition, it says we have to follow our master plan. Are you in our PUD? Uh, I think it's, uh, I don't know why I cited it in my, my, my letter here. Uh, ba, 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 whatever it is, let's see. Oh, uh, section thirteen oh two D and H. And, uh, D particularly, and then H incorporates the goals in our master plan. We, we have a right to tell them. That for the, for the welfare of our community, because apparently our community is ill. It's ill because we don't have workforce housing. We have an illness in our community. We have a need, a want. Okay, we have a right to say, you wanna build a PUD? Well, you're gonna have to meet these qualifying conditions. And why can't they? Why can't they? I, I mean, there's no, I, I said Fernwood to the.
I would just ask with all due respect, I share a lot of your sentiments and your concerns. But until we have something in front of us all laid out.
Okay.
Why?
But I dis- I disagree with the fact that new houses are affordable. You know, if, if you're a, a new homeowner, you're not gonna think about building a house at first. You're gonna buy a house. That you can afford and then work up to it where you can build a house eventually as you get older. And by building these other houses that people move into, it opens up these other houses. That are lower in price, that can be entry level houses for these other people that can't afford to get into. I mean, how, how many people can afford to build a house at three hundred dollars a square foot right now? I mean, people our age are thinking, I, I can't afford that. Well, three hundred, three hundred, three hundred square foot times four hundred and fifty is what? Well, how many people are gonna buy a four hundred and fifty square foot house though? A lot of people, a lot of people would buy a studio condo.
That's, that's, that's an opinion. That's, that's your opinion.
I, I guess I don't agree with that. You don't think somebody would, somebody would wanna buy a one bedroom, seven hundred and fifty foot, square foot condo? Not many. Oh, my God.
Seven fifty is different than four fifty.
Four fifty is a studio. Seven fifty is a one bedroom. And I showed you the plans. They're beautiful little plans.
All I'm asking, Denny, is that we get the plan in front of us to be able to have a conversation about it.
No, I, I'm not opposed to that idea. All I'm saying is, uh, let's not be surprised. When Renovari comes here with their PUD plan and has a pub, wants a public hearing. And Ferraro's gonna vote, I'm not even gonna vote for a public hearing on this because you, you don't have the, the, the plan that I think. Fits with our mandate. But you're, you're not allowed to do that as a planning commissioner. We, sir, as hell are. You're injecting your opinion into that. Well, what the hell? I'm not opinion. This is, this is what, this is what our, this is what the PUD standards say. If it's, if it's legal.
You got five people on the planning commission. Everybody has their different opinions and that's what makes it a beautiful thing.
I know, I'm only one vote. And I'm just telling you. I don't know who else would agree with me. Maybe everybody else disagrees with me here. That's fine. All I'm saying is. I, I can't vote for, I, I can't vote to approve that kinda plan, either from Forestville. Or, or from, from Renovari. When it doesn't fit with all this talk about we need affordable housing. And then fit that within the qualifications or qualifying conditions of a PUD. And fit that within our goals and objectives of our master plan, we, we. We're just administering things that the township board and the people of this township have decided. And we're supposed to implement those things. That's all I'm saying. I just don't wanna have anybody feel like, okay, I, they're being blindsided. And I, I don't know, Poulsen is a great architect. He could, he could come up with. He could combine fifteen of those, sixteen of those units to fit so some people could be able to buy those. That's all.
Yeah, so when it gets to that point in the PUD process where you have that initial meeting with them.
Yeah.
You can, um.
I, I will.
Make them aware of your opinions.
I will. I just, and I, you know, whatever you wanna do, you're, you, you know more about this than obviously than I do. And.
Well, I don't. I, I administer the ordinance in the master plan that we have here. And right now we don't even have a project other than an, an option to purchase a property.
Sure.
Based on, you know, full zoning compliance.
So we really need to go step by step.
But I don't know, I, I mean, so what would, what would be the, what would be the harm? And just having Joe Ferrari come here and sit here in a work session with us and she can tell me I'm all wet. There's no way you're gonna have that, Ferraro. You know, and I. I think we need a work session for that.
That's what happened in Marquette, right? So they, they, they got to a certain point, they all had a warm fuzzy about it and then. Uh, I think the planning commission told them to go, you know, kick rocks.
Why? We know.
Well, it's because of the residents in the area didn't want that there.
They felt there was a promise. Yeah, there was a promise.
So.
A verbal promise, which nobody remembers.
But the planning commission supported that.
Yes, what they, they shouldn't have, but.
It was a verbal.
Verbal promise of what?
That they would not develop.
That they wouldn't develop that when they put McCollum through there.
Yeah, that's a totally different issue. This is like vacant.
Right, it is.
So, so let's, let's just kinda keep going and, and know that we have lots to go through yet and, um. When she comes and, and Danny, it's good for you.
Yeah, I'm not trying to throw a wrench to anything. I'm trying to facilitate it. I, I wanted this. I'm the one that told you to contact the people from News.
And we do want it.
Yeah, I mean, so.
We, I as a, as a mom, want it for my kids and grandchildren to be able to buy a house. I want it for my.
And the median income, I mean, even, even gauged by the median, they say the median income is between. They're gonna shoot between sixty and a hundred and twenty percent. I gave you the figures.
The median income in market township is forty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Oh, that's even worse. In terms of affordability.
Well, let's wait and see because, because nothing's come here yet. It's kind of like the Longyear thing. Nothing is here.
Have people have a lot of opinions about something.
They're waiting to watch everything and then come with a proposal. But nothing's here, so. People ask me all the time, I go, I don't know.
Never know, might not even come.
Might not.
I'm, I'm not trying to be obstructive. I'm trying to, I was trying to facilitate something and negotiate. You can negotiate anything, anything, everything's negotiable.
But, but don't we have to wait till she comes?
You kinda have to remember. It's up to a point and they could just say, forget it, we're gonna go somewhere else and then you're left without anything. So, you know, it's.
Yeah.
Kinda walking a fine line there.
I would like to see housing of any type built on that lot, rather than another big box or medium box store. That's got a twenty year lease coming into this community.
Yeah, yeah, and it's sitting there empty.
Who, who's, who's behind Ironstone? The one that's gonna develop all the apartments over at, by Marquette Mall?
Oh, I don't know.
I have no idea. It's not relevant to our discussion.
Well, pretty, uh.
No, it's not. No, it's not.
I'm just saying, there's a lot of developers now.
It's not the one that he's talking about.
That's the one on, on, on McCollum.
We have one parcel.
So can we keep, let's keep.
That's what he's talking about, I think.
No, there's another one. It's a big apartment. It's like a hundred apartment.
Who's that gonna go?
By the scale.
By the scale.
Yep. There's over a hundred, a hundred units we're gonna put in. Anyway, I'm just saying, there's a lot of developers that are around here. You got Longyear, you got Ironstone, you got. Renovari.
At the hospital.
Yeah, it's a, we are an attractive place for a lot of people, not only in the region, but nationally right now. So.
I got a question. How is brownfield money determined to be spent on a parcel?
It has to have qual- it has to qualify.
Uh, and how, what, how would that parcel qualify over there? Under what, what grounds would it be?
That's what they are working with the, the land bank on right now.
To me, a brownfield is contaminated.
Yeah, but it was, it was expanded years ago.
All that, it's all different now.
So it doesn't have to be.
Can it be historical?
But it can also be blighted. It can also be, um.
Junk?
Antiquated, yeah, yeah.
Can I get a brownfield on Lake of Champion?
Good.
Not for resi- oh, I don't know.
Huh? Isn't that for residential?
Yeah, but it's.
Somebody has to revitalize it.
Perhaps you could if you're willing to give your property to the land bank for a little bit.
It says revitalized abandoned properties and return them to the tax rolls.
Yeah, you can pretty much brownfield anything now.
I'm sure there's some expert out there. We could have come visit us if we want, but.
Yeah, there's.
If you put something.
Google too.
If you put something thick enough together and give it to them, they'll, alright, we don't wanna read all through that, so let's just let you brownfield it.
There we go.
Um, Andrew is, uh, is becoming a brownfield expert. And you think about it, not just our community, cause we don't have as much, but you think about Madonna issue maybe. There's tons of properties that if somebody was interested, would certainly requalify, um, for demolition costs.
Aren't we talking about a vacant parcel over there?
Yeah.
So how are we returning that to, I mean, what, what's not market lotting now?
Um, I think that if they put the property in the hands of the land bank, the land bank has the ability to. Qualify that in a different way than we could.
Does that, does that cede ownership from the township to the land bank? Or does the township still own it?
Renovare, uh, I, I, again, I'm not sure. This is all still, the sausage is still being made. But you will have a full explanation of how all this will work when it's presented to you.
Hopefully we can't wait.
Yeah.
It's just like that project downtown lies on the DDA and they had. Parking ramp was gonna be owned by the DDA, but it was gonna be brownfield, so leaving that property taxes.
Yeah.
Hotel could use it and it was.
Folks, these are all tools to help redevelopment along, okay? We're not, I mean, the utilities are basically there, uh, because they're, the water is right in front of them. They might have to run sanitary from the highway or something, but we're not running utilities, you know, a mile down the road. And expanding our utility system. These are all infill, well, close to infill developments. Yeah, this property, property happens to be a vacant parcel that the township has had for years because. It was originally, I think, kept by, uh, under manager Gerard's auspice as. You know, in case we needed another parking area someday for the old township hall. And then it was, it was our dump site for a while, um, so to have some real taxable value on the property, I think is beneficial to everybody. And with the park being there and adjacent to the, it's just a no brainer.
It'd be a great place.
It was a great idea brought forth by you.
Well, it'd be one of those walkable communities.
It would be very ironic if you didn't vote to approve it.
If, if it's, if it's got some affordable units in it, I don't say the whole thing. They can, they could, they could have. A, a, a seven hundred thousand dollar home, a million dollar home on that property. I don't care.
Pretty affordable. They don't even have garages.
Is that entire five acres buildable or is there, is there gullies in there on the western end or?
Um, no, it's a pretty, pretty good. It should be able to maximize.
I mean, it's really a nice.
Right, and it doesn't fit within sixty to hundred, twenty percent of the median income.
I, I would just advise you guys not to get hung up too much on the. What constitutes affordable, attainable. They said they're gonna deliver that to us. Let's let them.
Sort of like strawberry fields, nothing to get hung about.
Yeah. I, I also believe in what Jim's theory is, is that regardless of what they develop there. Or regardless of what Longyear develops, it is gonna open the housing market up. And that is also a benefit, so.
What opens it up in Marquette?
Yeah. Yeah.
Township, well.
Well, it'll be a township.
Still have people coming.
Except that. Ms. Arwood told us that they're advertising nationally for Longyear.
Of course they are.
Well, I don't, so. Maybe somebody in Chicago is gonna move out of a affordable unit and come up here and buy a four hundred thousand dollar home in Forestville.
They're not. They're gonna cash out their eight hundred to a million dollar house. And then pay cash on a four hundred thousand dollar house and recreate the rest of their life.
And that's what they're doing.
That's what they're, they're already doing that, yeah.
That's what Harlow Farms.
I saw a tiny little nineteen fifties house on West Magnetic on Zillow the other morning. Uh, with coffee and it was two hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars. That house would have been a hundred and fifty thousand dollars even seven years ago.
How many square feet was it? Probably about fifteen hundred?
Not even.
No.
It was in like one that maybe my grandmother would have lived in over, you know, on Norwood or something. Tiny house. It's just, it's astronomical and I don't think that the planning commission can really. No, less, I don't wanna, I don't wanna have to go to Roger to get an opinion on, you know, hey, is the planning commission. No, less, I don't wanna, I don't wanna have to go to Roger to get an opinion on, you know, hey, is the planning commission overextending your, your, your bounds? I don't wanna do that.
No.
But I think we have to be careful and tactful and professional and respectful about people that are interested in developing in our town.
I do too. I agree.
I don't, I haven't offended.
You don't wanna lose them.
I haven't offended any developer. Maybe I've, maybe I've offended a few people in this room, but.
I haven't forwarded them your email either.
There's no offense, but it's just, uh, you know, affordable housing, I just think isn't new housing for a lot of people. You know, they have to, you have to.
Well, let's wait and see.
Build it and they will buy.
Build up.
And you know, if we build enough units, there's gonna be empty units here.
That's right. That's right.
And we've lived through that.
Yeah.
And the bankers are gonna be so good, according to Ms. Ferrari, they're just gonna give big breaks on down payments.
Well, hopefully the state will give some funding to our working class like they do in other states for down payments.
That's the goal. That's one of their goals. That's one of their gap funding.
In Utah, that's how the teachers get housing.
I was on MLS the other day. Do you know how many houses are for sale in the city market? Seven.
Seven.
Seven houses.
That's incredible.
Well, how, how are my grandchildren?
There were always like a hundred and fifty to two hundred, or seven houses. That, that's, that's why it's unaffordable.
At least we know we need more at a base, that, as just the basis, we need more housing.
Yeah.
And people are going to age in place, so they're not gonna move out of their houses.
When are you gonna get going on your project?
Soon.
Soon? Okay. You starting on McCollum this, this spring?
Uh, fall probably.
Fall? What about Northern?
That's still a ways out and I'm not involved in that yet.
No.
I'm not.
You will be though.
I will too.
Yeah.
Okay, wings are on.
Okay, let's keep going.
Okay. Sorry, I keep forgetting. I, I should have a wing schedule here in front of me.
Yeah, I should put it up as part of the PowerPoint.
Alright. Nine A, Township Board Report, Linda Winslow.
Okay, so everyone got the minutes correct and all the information, the, um, things of interest would be that we have a, um, old wide format printer scanner for sale, if anybody's interested.
Is that a plotter?
Jason, is that a plotter?
It's a plotter and a scanner. It's very nice, but you need the right operating system and driver.
Old.
It's, it's antiquated, yeah.
Um, they were gonna redesign the township fishbowl, they call it. That's off the table. It was too expensive this year.
Really?
Yes. Um, and then marijuana money came in at over a hundred thousand, one oh three. Um, and, um, at the next township board meeting, you might wanna support this. Um, we did, um, I did mention that we had agreed to put some aside to fund recreation. But that hasn't come to the township board yet. A hundred, three thousand unplanned money. And in my world, it's always unplanned. We should not budget it, but we'll see what they say.
That didn't include the new, uh, pop place, did it?
That doesn't count.
They're not a dispensary.
They're not a dispensary.
Oh, one ever count?
Only dispensaries.
Only two we have.
Well, wait a minute, which one are you talking about?
We have two dispensaries with four licenses.
Yeah.
So there's excise tax on both medical dispensaries and, um, adult use recreationals.
So at some point, this group may want to consider, um.
Adding more.
Adding more licenses, or not.
You wonder why the city has so many.
The city has quite a few and the county also got a large chunk of money for this.
Yeah, three hundred and some thousand.
More than, was it more than that?
Yeah.
It's a lot.
It's just a way to grease the skins.
You're right. Um, other than that, we are probably going to have community days, uh, which is the events that happen at, um, the township, um, park in the middle of Trowbridge um, on the first Saturday. It's gonna look a little different. Anyone interested in being, uh, part of that group? Let me know.
For Saturday of what?
Pardon me?
For Saturday of what?
August. Wanting to be part of that group, let me know. We have a meeting, um, on, I think that, let's say the fifteenth, a Wednesday, so about a Wednesday. First one was, yeah, anyways. Let me know if you wanna be part of it. If not, I'll just ask you to help at any event. Okay, this is kinda fun, I guess. It'll be more fun. Thanks, that's it. Go.
Alright. Recommission report.
Recommission bid last month and supported the grant application that you, uh, scheduled a public hearing for tonight. Uh, Eric did attend the road committee report. I didn't catch up with him today on what they discussed, but I believe they're talking about bids for the road maintenance, uh, program for this year. I'll have him report back to you at our next meeting.
Is that chip seal, that stuff?
It's always a combination of things, yeah. I can't believe how bad it is this year.
Oh, there?
Yeah, just right in front of the shop here. So, yeah. Uh, planning and zoning reports, um, the developers of the Panera Bridge and, um, Texas Roadhouse did come to an agreement with MDOT on a, an adjustment to that, uh, Easterly ingress. So they'll be extending that lane a little bit, taking out some guard rail and adding some fill. Um, that's, that was a big point of contention, I know.
Is that into the parcel, parcel or out of?
Uh, oh, it's still in the right of way. In fact, the right of way extends pretty far north. Well, the easement, uh, that they purchased extends pretty far north, so it's not into private property, uh, still well within the regular. Um, other than that, these items, um, kinda took some time. Um, had a meeting with Eagle and, uh, I'm sorry, Eagle Mine and Matt Johnson and, um, the gentleman who purchased the four hundred and sixty acres adjacent to the well road. We're all in agreement that they're gonna try to push to get a green corridor carved out through there. And, uh, you know, you wonder how fast private development can do things other than government. Um, by the end of the discussion, uh, Eagle was willing to trade property that they had up near the, uh, the mine site for property that this gentleman had, um, in an effort to secure that area. So we, it was a great meeting.
The pathway? This is the big, the pathway from Big Bay down to Marquette?
It would be part of it because Matt Johnson is trying to push, uh, a Greenway corridor all the way to Big Bay. Through the Lake Superior, uh, uh, Lake Superior tract, um, you know, Hogsback. Um, what am I trying to say there? The little, little Prescott tract, all the way. But Somerville Trail, you know, uh, the NTN has a trail right there which is their main vein because that's the ski trail, trail, and then North Country Trail, which is a national trail. So the property owner is very aware and is working very well. So we're talking about taking everything south of the Fly Ash Road and putting that into a, like a conservation even of some kind.
So the Fly Ash Road goes.
The next time, yeah.
Fly Ash Road goes east to west?
Well, it, it goes southwest or southeast to northwest.
Right. And so you're talking about south of that, but in a corridor?
Yeah, north of the railroad tracks.
Okay, and then coming what? Down into like the?
In the, in the district.
Into the tourist park area?
Yes.
Okay.
Along, along that, that area. So, uh, very preliminary discussions and really no, no official anything, but, uh, that was a very favorable meeting. Um, and, yeah, other, you know, people calling, you know, it's getting to be construction season, so a lot of inquiries. Short-term rentals. And then now I'll be putting this grant together between now and the end of the month.
What are they gonna be doing with the highway from Marquette Township to Nagani? I just heard on forty-one it'll be.
Yeah, so that's just a maintenance project. Basically, they'll be, they may be redoing the whole thing. But it'll be, you know, lane by lane and.
Can I put up a toll booth on four ninety-two?
No kidding.
Oh, yeah. Slow down about thirty?
Well, the nice thing is, is that, uh, well, it'll affect traffic in the township too, but not as bad as the Roundabout project did. I'm surprised, so. Certain times of day, it's gonna be pretty hairy, you know?
Yeah.
It'll be speeding, speeding up.
Okay, that's it?
Uh, for now, Jim, yeah. I hope to have more for you at the next meeting.
Alright. Any announcements?
Uh, Tech Northern this weekend, go Tech.
Go Northern.
It's on TV too.
On TV?
Yes.
Yeah.
Is both nights or just Saturday?
Is there only one?
One Saturday.
Why did you have two games last weekend?
It was a best of three.
She's just at the hockey.
Then why is it just one game this weekend? I don't get, I don't get that.
That's how they, that's how they run the tournament.
Okay, gotcha.
Always the best, right, Jim? Get to the end and you get one game, one shot.
Yeah, we went to Saturday night's game. It was great. Overtime winner, thriller.
Great.
Superior Hockey is the, uh, state champions. Um, you probably saw that.
Stevie Double A, that's right.
Yeah, yeah. Josh Falls.
And my little AM eight year or nine year old grandson, sports B team, won and are going to state. Have you ever, do you ever remember that? It's never.
No.
Never.
That's cute.
Great.
Yeah, I know. They might get killed.
Still not made it.
Well, that team, whoever, I, I quit talking.
Hopefully they don't get home with the red.
Alright.
What did they get?
Uh, no public here for public comment. Additional comments by planning commissioners. Linda?
No.
Bethany?
None.
Danny?
Come on, Danny.
Steve?
I yield my time to Danny.
I'm good too, 'cause I know Jason wants to get out of here, so.
Oh, we were here till nine last time, so this, this is a fair trade, I think.
Alright.
Okay, we're done?
Okay. Motion, or, we don't need a motion. Meeting adjourned.
Now I'm hit.
TV in Chicago.
That's loud, isn't it?
Yeah, really is.
No. Danny?
Yeah.
It's adjourned.
The guy who's doing that, um, property is Jim and I, and I lost his last name. The one next to the ski hill. Oh, the one that's building all those.
For a different.
It's called, but it's called Ironstone.
Something, yeah. I think he's a professor or something business out at Northern.
Oh, okay.
Ashley.
It's like a tip on my tongue.
He's a professor at Northern, he's building a bunch of.
Some in our business, some, he's in the business department or something, yeah.
Tied into the ski hill or just?
No, they have.
No, just in that area. That I know of, I don't know too much about that one.
Saw hills around there.
Is over by Division and McCollum. There's like a little high there.
Keep going through planners.
But this was, this is.
Past, yeah, I don't even know exactly, but I know it's a lot. There's a lot of units.